Right, good evening everyone. This is the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, January 3rd, 2017. And our first item on the agenda tonight, before we get to that, I think everyone has gotten the message because we have no one here tonight for the medical marijuana, New England Patient Network matter, but for anyone watching who was expecting that, that has been deferred until January 31st. So, at the request of New England Patient Network. So that will be carried over until the 31st. So our first item on the agenda tonight is minutes, and we have minutes from several dates.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October 18th, 2016, October 25th, 2016, November 2nd, 2016, and November 15th, 2016, as written.
Sir.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Future meeting dates, we have January 10th and January 31st. And January 10th will, one of the items will be the budget, and that will probably take a significant portion of the meeting. I know the town administrator's working with department heads very hard on that. Citizens speak. Do we have anyone tonight for citizens speak? Mr. Travis, please come up and join us at the table.
Thank you.
Good evening and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to everybody. As I'll introduce myself, as I know all the people here, I'm Paul Travis. I'm a resident of the town for over 40 years, small business, and I own some property in the town, in East Milton Square especially. And I'm here concerned about the, and get on the agenda for this year, the deck. We desperately need parking in East Milton Square, in all of Milton. Businesses can't survive without it. We have a small commercial tax base, as you well know. Taxes are going up on the commercial. A lot of fellow businessmen can't take it anymore. You drive to East Milton Square on a Saturday, there's no parking spaces during the week, no parking spaces. At night, it's not bad. We do have three restaurants though now, with the new pizza place coming in, Mr. Chan's coming on board soon, I hope. Navara has some parking, and Abbey Park has some parking. We have the plate. I'm concerned that there's some older statesmen in the town holding this up. We have to get it going. It's 2017, it's not 1950 anymore. We have to go into the future, or we're gonna lose it. We're gonna lose our businesses, and then we're gonna have vacant storefronts. And our commercial tax base is gonna go right down the tubes. And that simply means the residential people are gonna have to pick it up. We're looking for apartments in the square, we're looking for condominiums in the town. Being on the old master plan committee, that's what people want. They wanna be able to walk to someplace from a small parking spot to go to, you know, CBS. CBS has this very small, limited parking space, and we're lucky they're in the Fruit Center, because as you know, the other parking space, the town parking space, the town doesn't own, across from Brugers. We could lose that lease, and there's absolutely no parking in East Milton Square. The deck is 25 parking spaces, maybe 30 if we could squeeze them in, but we need it. And it's been probably before all of you people have been on the board, that we're trying to get this through. We've already lost a significant amount of money by not being shovel-ready a couple of years ago, and I'm afraid we're gonna lose any hope of getting this. And we desperately need it. So I'm begging to the board, this has to be a major agenda right up to 2017, to bring to the town a parking lot. And after that, we're gonna have to work on other sections of the town too, not belittling Central or Lower Mills. They need parking too, but let's get one bite of the apple at a time, finish off the apple. Get the town going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Travis. Is there anyone else tonight for citizens speak? Seeing none. Okay, we will move on to a discussion of warrant articles for the May 2017 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. So we have several that we talked about. Actually, at the last meeting, we voted to submit an appropriation for the master plan article, the military compensation for employees who are active, on active duty or in the guard, revised capital improvement planning committee article. I don't think we've seen any of those drafts yet. The home rule petition article for Two Adams Street, and changing the speed limit from 30 to 25. So some of those are still being drafted by town council. We have from Ned Corcoran, a draft of the Two Adams Street home rule petition. So we at least have one draft. The others we have not yet voted. So, we want to, I suppose we can work off a list that Ms. Martin distributed. Everyone should have a copy of this. The first one in this particular list is the bylaw for the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. So we've voted, okay, actually the first five, we've just said we've voted those. The next one is the revolving account for the Consolidated Facilities Department. And a draft on that article came over today. I don't know if anyone's, everyone's had a chance to look at it. These came over late in the day, so it's possible, some of them we may need time to review and finalize them next week. The deadline is for submitting warrant articles is Thursday.
The only thing I see looking at the articles is there's no, there's no cap on the spending in it.
Yeah, I noticed that. And, and I wanted to, so, okay, so let's look into that, cap on spending. And this also has the Consolidated Facilities Director with the approval of the town administrator. So let's just check, I think we just wanna be sure that they're all consistent, because these usually get voted every year in one block article, and there's a lot of boards. So let's just check on that. Is there anything else, the cap on spending?
The cap on spending, and now that you bring up the approval of the town administrator, well, that's a joint.
With the schools?
With the schools that may run afoul of that.
Well, it's for the town office building.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure that, and its revenue received from credits from the operation of the solar panels on the town office building.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, I don't know.
I'm not sure that the schools would have to be involved in it. I had that same thought earlier when I looked at this. Okay, so, subject to checking that, we might need to tweak some of this language. Are we comfortable including this one?
Yes.
In the warrant?
Yes.
Would someone like to make a motion to submit this article?
I'll make a motion to include a revolving fund article for Consolidated Facilities Department in the May Town Meeting.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The other one we received today, one of two others we received, was relating to the hours at Town Hall. And this is an amendment to Chapter 13 of the general bylaws. And again, this came over late in the day, probably none of us had a chance to really go back and check these sections in the bylaws, but it would delete a sentence that reads, "All offices of the town should be open continuously for the transaction of business between 8:30 and 5:00 every day." And then give, and this is the sentence, the paragraph would just read, "The Personnel Board has the authority to allow work schedule between those hours."
So the general idea is allowing the half-day?
Which is already negotiated in the collective bargaining agreements.
Right, yeah.
So apparently town council believes that sentence alone is sufficient, but we should probably just confirm that with him. He drafted it, so he must, but.
Otherwise, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I'm fine with it too.
Okay, so would anyone like to make a motion to include this article in the warrant?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to include a Chapter 13 bylaw or an office hour article in the May Town Meeting warrant.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, stabilization fund for roadways. I believe this one came over late, and I wasn't able to print a copy of it. This is one attached here. Tom, do you wanna speak to this? You're the one who requested this article.
Yeah, I mean, the idea was, you know, if, if we go for an override, and if the operating side of it isn't outrageously large, which who knows at this point, it would be nice to be able to fund a stabilization fund for the maintenance of roadways with some of that money. You know, maybe it's 500,000, maybe it's 700,000, just a number depending upon what, you know, what the rest of it looks like. That would be part of a contingent, non-contingent budget article. So I, I don't know, we'll have to talk to John Flynn if we should put that in there, you know, the contingent, non-contingent, you know, the, the non-contingent would be zero funding, and the contingent would be a number, you know, such an override. But, you know, that's the idea, it's just, right now, you know, we're just, there's just not enough money there to sufficiently fund, you know, road repaving projects. Every year in the capital, you know, the, the capital budget, you know, there's a request for a million and three, and, you know, maybe you fund 200,000 of it, 300,000 of it, and the rest just, you know, we get about 700,000 from Chapter 90 money. So, you know, we got a huge shortfall, so, just some way to maybe put a little dent in it.
I agree. I think it's, it's good foresight, the long-term planning, especially when, you know, roads are a big part of what we need to do and accomplish, and we don't get a lot of money for it.
No, we don't.
For Chapter 90.
So this article really is just the article to establish the, the special stabilization fund? The way it's written?
Home rule petition, the way it's written.
Yeah, I didn't think you needed a home rule petition.
Well, I was gonna ask you that question. Was that how, is that what you had, is that required, or is that what you had in mind?
No, it's not what I had in mind. I would assume that it didn't. I mean, the law provides for special purpose stabilization funds now, and that's general law does. So I don't understand why it would be a home rule petition.
Okay, so we have to clarify.
And you can fund it with an override, that's even provided in, you know, the, if you fund it with an override, the way it works is, it can go up by two and a half percent every year if the Board of Selectmen decide that they wanna fund it something less that year, they have that authority. But then that sets a new floor, and it can only go up two and a half percent from, from that floor after that.
Okay.
But that's right in the general law, so I, I don't understand why you need a home rule petition.
Well, all right, so that's another question I had in terms of the amount to be funded. So the way this is worded, it looks like, once there's an initial vote to put some amount in, then that presumably would carry forward year to year, unless, as you said, there's a vote to decrease it.
Correct.
There may be a year where, it's just a very difficult year, and there's no ability to fund it.
If you decrease it, then, well, if it's done with, if it's done with override, then those are committed dollars. So, you know, you're high pressed to, to say, "No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move those override dollars into, you know, into salaries or whatever." You'd be high pressed to do that. If you weren't funding it with override money, if it was just general fund.
Free cash.
Yeah. I, I don't know if it works the same way, if you decide to reduce it, then that sets a new floor on it, or a new ceiling on it? I'm not sure.
I'm not sure either.
Okay, so your thought was to build it into an override, so that, that whatever amount gets determined would be the amount that gets carried forward every year?
Yes.
Rather than, you know, we might have 200,000 of free cash one year, we might have 50 the next year, we might have 400,000 the next year, and then it's gonna carry.
So it's a commitment, an annual commitment.
Okay, so, so this article would at least authorize a home rule petition.
Yeah, it needs a lot of.
Possible that as the budget discussions go forward.
Yeah.
The amount may have to await that discussion.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, so we still have to find out why, whether we need a home rule petition on this, or why we need a home rule petition on this?
Right.
Because obviously town council thinks we do. Okay, so it sounds like this general consensus to submit this. Would anyone like to make a motion?
So I'll make a motion to, let me just make sure I've got it, to set aside a stabilization fund for roadways, as voted at May Town Meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Let's see. Traffic Commission, Chief King is in the audience. Chief, are you here for this, or did you wanna come up and speak to this, or did you?
Well, I'm here for the executive session.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
So this is kind of a placeholder article anyways, isn't it?
Yeah, so on, so on the traffic commission, the good news is that in doing some further research collectively, we've, we've determined that a few years ago, there was a modification to the bylaws that did authorize the appointment of one resident to the traffic commission. So we can, we, that's actually gone through Town Meeting, and we can go ahead and appoint somebody anytime we would like, and I think we should do it soon.
Yes.
To that, to the traffic commission. Now, the chief, the town administrator, and we've had some discussions about some other changes that we'd possibly like to make to this article, what we need to revise it a little bit, because the, the prior article that was passed at Town Meeting a few years ago also changed some of the titles and made some minor changes. But the chief, Chief King has raised some other issues relating to other sections of the traffic commission article, that, the deadline is January 5th, so it's possible we could still get this in, and we could discuss it in what we hope will be final form on Tuesday, the 10th, when we meet next. Or it's possible, given all the other articles that are going forward, and we know there's some substantial planning board articles and two budgets going to Town Meeting, that this might be one that we would like to.
Move to October.
Move to October. Given that we can already appoint one resident, we can at least see how that works out.
Yep.
The way, the draft we were working on would have appointed three residents, and we can still increase it. But given that bylaws have to go to the Attorney General, and then, so there's a Town Meeting process, the AG process, it would probably make sense just to make sure we get it right, and all the changes that we really want to do are in the one draft, and then we don't have to keep revisiting it too many times. But it's possible we may still be able to get this in for this year. So what I would propose that we do is take this back up on the 10th and see if we can circulate what we think is a fine drive. It turns out that we think there's just more time needed to revisit some of the other sections, then we probably should defer it till May.
Okay.
The noise bylaw.
The noise bylaw, I've had a meeting with, with Joe Prondak, and we kinda discussed the general, you know, in general what we're kinda looking for. He's gonna try and, he was gonna do some research, try and draft something. The sticking point last time was with residents working and making noise on construction project, you know, could a resident do their own construction project during any hour they wanted to? And that's where the sticking point was. So to try and go back and get some more reasonable hours, you know, so that it wouldn't have as big an impact on, on the resident if we're gonna go through with it. It's my feeling still that noise is noise. Construction noise is construction noise, no matter who's making it. So there should be some restriction on, you know, whether it's above a certain decibel level, but, you know, between, between hours, you know, but I think what a lot of pushback was, was like the Sunday hours were just too late, too unreasonable, and there were a few other things that, so, you know, try and soften that, but still get some kind of a bylaw in there that will, you know, look to construction noise.
Do you think this is ready for, will be ready for May, or do you think we're looking at October?
I wouldn't be surprised if it were October. It wouldn't be the worst thing in the world, for the same reason that we got a ton of stuff on our plate for, for May. You know, whether it gets done in May or October, I, I'm not sure that it really matters that much.
Do you want to take the same approaches with the prior one, that if, if this next few days allows us time to get it?
Yeah, that's fine.
Further meetings or further discussions, and then possibly we could take it up again on the 10th?
Yep.
Since we basically have a draft from the last time?
Yep.
Okay.
That works.
All right, converting zero Alvin Avenue to additional parking for Andrews Field, this, again, we've already talked about this.
I had, I had a short conversation with Joe Lynch, who has reservations about doing it. Number one, there's a sewer mania and a water mania run under that. It's all peat. Anything that is built on there would have to be built on pylons, otherwise it's just gonna sink into the ground. Then it may not be feasible, or, you know, so, I think we should get him in and, and have a conversation about it before we.
Well, and you brought it up with him when he was here last week.
Yeah.
And he raised a lot of those issues, so this was a request from the Neighborhood Association in East Milton, and I, it sounds like there's a lot more that would have to be done in order to consider this and really have it vetted, so.
Right. It would be much preferable, I mean, in my mind, you know, even though it doesn't create parking, to just make it a nice little, you know, park area, maybe a kid park, maybe a dog park, but, you know.
So we could defer this until May, I mean.
So there needs to be more discussion on this.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so why don't we defer that and just notify the Neighborhood Association that it's not quite ready? The alcohol tax.
Yeah, so that's, that's something that I brought up, and, you know, at the last meeting, I think we took it under consideration to go from 2% to 1%. Now, you can look at both sides of this, okay? So first, if I'm a business owner, I say, geez, or a resident, geez, you know, a tax, you know, and nobody wants that. But with that being said, you know, I feel like we have an obligation with the opioid crisis that's going on, and the data that we've received from the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. And we have to find creative ways outside the box to support their efforts. Their efforts are, they, it's tough for them to get money, you know, and, you know, we've seen all the data. Milton teens drink about twice the amount of other teens in other municipalities. That's difficult for me, you know, and, because that is a gateway, you know, to the next step. And, you know, this is a statewide crisis, a national crisis, and if, and if we don't find ways to support, help, and educate Milton families, then we're gonna be at a standstill. And so this is one of the ideas that maybe we could, we could impose a, be a home rule, or have a good discussion about a 1% tax to the restaurants and anyone who sells alcohol in town, to go specifically towards the Milton Substance Abuse Coalition and their efforts to educate and help.
So this would be all, all alcohol, whether sold through a package store or?
Correct, correct. And, you know, so, yeah, that, you know, obviously businesses have to survive, but we also have people who come to our restaurants as a destination restaurant, they come from out of town. So it's a way to get money from, from outside of the town to come and, and help support the families in need in our town. So, you know, it's, it's one of those things, you know, you could be on either side of it, but, you know, I'll be honest with you, I'm taking the side of the Milton families the long-term, and I'd like to see us take a good, high look at this and see if, you know, Town Meeting would approve it.
So I haven't seen any draft from Town Council on this yet.
The question is legality, number one. Can you legally do it?
Right.
And I don't know the answer to that. I mean, I think the goal is a lot of.
We did ask last week, we did want Town Council to look at that question.
Yeah.
Do you know, Mike?
That's whatever.
No, we spoke to him today, and he was still looking into that.
Okay.
I mean, at a minimum, it's a home rule petition, even if it's legal at all.
Correct.
Yeah.
So we'll have to wait and get a word, and go from there, and.
David, did you have May in mind for this, or October, or does it, does it matter?
I just think that, you know, I think it could wait till October, you know, if we need more time, obviously, it's something, you know.
And 100% of this would go towards.
100% of it would go.
Substance abuse.
Correct. But if, you know, if we did need more time, obviously. But, you know, I'd like to see it happen sooner than later, because we've got a lot of good momentum going here, and I know that they're, they're in need.
They definitely are in need.
Yeah, I guess we're 100% going towards substance abuse, it has no impact on the budget or revenue from a town standpoint, so it can be either.
All right, so I think we need to, for that one, we need to do some follow-up with Town Council and see whether there's anything that could be, if those answers can be obtained this week, and if so, if we can get something for Tuesday, the 10th.
Yeah.
Sure. I'll work on that.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the one that we haven't yet talked about, Town Planner Director Bill Clark is here, so Bill, would you please join us for this discussion? We have a draft of an article for an easement of land at the Milton Wharf, down on Wharf Street. This just came over today. There was a discussion about this last week that Mr. Clark, Mr. Dennehy, and I did part in with Town Council. This, in some ways, this grew out of the master plan committee's work in the, in the project, the work we're doing down at the Wharf. A lot of the stakeholders have been coming to the Master Plan Implementation Committee's meetings. As this board knows, but for the benefit of the public, there were, back when the 88 Wharf Condominium Association was built, there were three easements given to the town. Two of them were permanent easements that are along the area of the water. The third is a 10,000 square foot parcel, it's where the boats are currently stored, and that expired after, it was a 12-year period, it was due to expire last year, we entered into a one-year extension with the condo trustees to extend that until next June. And they are now offering the town a permanent easement for that 10,000 square foot parcel. We have a draft from Town Council that we may need to just check some, whether it's a little too restrictive, because it talks about just boat storage, and that's where the planning director's gonna be having some further conversations with the condo association. So Bill, do you have any updates for us, or do you wanna give any additional background on this?
No, I think you did a pretty good job. The issue down here is one of, we have a rectangle that we store boats on now. We'd actually like that rectangle to grow a little bit and go to the, go west just a little bit, too. The parcel is up against a hill, there is a flattened-out area just north of where the present 10,000 square feet is. There was an agreement before the condo association was there to be able to use that area, but during the special permit process for the condo association, it got moved back a little bit. We'd like to actually bring it back to where it originally was, and maybe go a little bit further. That would allow us to use all of the area down in that area. Not, you know, we're not looking to put a blight to the, to 88 Wharf, we're actually looking to use the area to bring more people to the waterfront, to make the waterfront more user-friendly.
And the Friends of the Milton Crew, whether it's the high school crew team or the Masters Crew, are very active on the waterfront now, and that, that program has really grown considerably. And Master Plan, this board, but also the Master Plan Implementation Committee are trying to really work with the Yacht Club, with the condo association, with the Friends of the Crew, with the Farmers Market, and all the different stakeholders in that area to come up with a solution that works for everybody and helps the, especially the high school crew team, but also the Masters Crew, to make as much use of that area for storage and for waterfront activities as possible. So this, this would, this would turn our current one-year on top of the 12-year easement into a permanent easement. And we may need to just confirm whether some of this language is, needs to be tweaked a little bit, but, but John put some time into putting this article together for us today.
The idea is public access to the waterfront.
Yeah.
How do we maximize it for everybody? It maximizes it for the town, it maximizes it for 88 Wharf, and the Crew's part of both. So, how do we, how do we do this? This is a good step to increasing that access.
Overall, it makes a lot of sense, I think, but.
Makes a ton of sense, right.
I guess the only real question is, when you have an easement, do, we already did have a 12-year easement, so it, I guess it doesn't matter that much, but in terms of contamination or anything, do we inherit any liability because of that, if there is any?
We did talk with Town Council about that, and he was still looking into that issue, but did not think so with an easement, but was going to confirm that.
Okay. Otherwise, it makes total sense.
The other, the other good part to it is, the area is all paved. Where, where the boats are stored now, it's all paved. So it's been paved since the 50s, when it was Godfrey Oil, Godfrey Coal. It was a lumberyard before that. So it's, it's been commercial since the 1600s. So we're not changing what's underneath, it's, it's already paved. Pavement is a, is a great encapsulator. So we're not looking to take and dig into the soils to see what's there, we're not going to disturb what's already there. If we were to go back a little bit, no one's used that area anyways, because it's a hill that goes almost straight up, so.
Okay, great. And this, just to publicly think, there's been a few other people who have been part of some of the discussions and really pushing to move this forward, and that's Cheryl Togayis of the Master Plan Committee and former Town Administrator John Cronin, who've shown real interest and have had a lot of conversations with a lot of the different stakeholders. So would anyone like to submit a motion to submit this article?
I'll make a motion to submit a warrant article to the May Town Meeting for a permanent easement at the, what's it called?
Milton Landing.
Milton Landing.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I think that's all of them. Are there any that we've missed? Or any others that anyone at this date wanted?
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, then we're on to number six, which is an acceptance of a donation to the Council on Aging. Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation in the amount of $5,000 to the Council on Aging, to be used for community outreach.
Yeah, I'll second.
Any discussion?
Thank you very much.
An anonymous donor, yes.
Very generous.
Very generous, and thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have next an appointment of the, it's on our agenda as Public Records Officer. The title's actually Records Access Officer. Mr. Dennehy, did you want to make any comments on this?
Sure, so, yeah, so this is the public records law that was recently instituted, the portions of it that became law on January 1st. One is to assign a Records Access Officer. We've talked to the board, appoint Town Clerk Susan Galvin as our Public Records Officer. She would be the conduit to any FOIA or public records requests that will come in. She will then direct them to the appropriate department head, who will follow through on that FOIA or public record request, and get them back to Madam Clerk in a timely fashion, so as to be as responsive as the new legislation allows the town to be.
I'll make a motion to appoint our Town Clerk, Susan Galvin, as Public Records Officer for the Town of Milton.
I'll second.
Can we just...
Access Officer.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just to change it to Records Access Officer.
Records Access Officer. I'll make a motion.
So we match the statute.
To appoint Town Clerk as the Public...
Records Access Officer.
Records Access Officer for the Town of Milton.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have an appointment to the Conservation Commission, and I'll just report, this is a recommendation from Conservation Commission Chairman John Kiernan, who met with Mr. Van Lingan, and thinks he has the background that the CONCOM has been looking to add to their commission for a long time in environmental science. So he's recommending that we make this appointment.
Okay, I'll move to appoint Hans P. Van Lingan to Viola Street, to the Conservation Committee, commissioned to serve through May 2019.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Town Administrators Report.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. Everyone, thanks for having me tonight. First, I'd like to thank you for putting all these articles forward to May Town Meeting, or potentially October Town Meeting. I think the collectivism of these should make for a much more efficient government. I'd just like to talk about Tom's Stabilization Fund for a second. I know we'll find out at the MMA meeting on January 20th whether the state decides to give $300 million or $200 million in Chapter 90 money this year, when you're only getting 3/10 of 1% every dollar counts. So creating a stabilization fund like that. Obviously, the roads in Milton, there is an algorithm that the state uses to calculate the Chapter 90.
Road miles.
Yeah, road miles, visitors, residents. I did some research, and I just, I'm going to revisit it at the state level if I could to take a look at that algorithm. You have towns not nearly as close to Boston, whose roads aren't used nearly as much as Milton. Obviously, Boston's the hub, and people are trying to get there. A lot of people have to come through Milton. There are some towns that don't necessarily have that roadway traffic or usage that Milton does that get the same piece of the pie. So I'd just like to take a look at that algorithm and see if we're being short-changed a little bit, or if there's any window of opportunity to increase that 3/10 of a percent on an annual basis. That, coupled with the stabilization fund, should, you know, get us to a better point where we're repaving and restructuring more roadways, making them safer. If we get the 25 mile per hour rule, we can build streets that are a little more conducive to that roadway mileage. But again, just, I think these articles are great, and I appreciate you putting them forward to May Town Meeting. Couple of small notes, we applied for, thanks to you, Tom, the Community Compact, Mass, Commonwealth of Mass has a grant program. We received a grant for $10,000 to take a look at our vehicle maintenance program, not only from a preventive maintenance side, but basically to make sure that our fleet is up to date and we're replenishing, turning the fleet over in a more timely fashion, so we're not wasting maintenance dollars on older equipment, so... Although $10,000 doesn't seem like a lot of money, it's a starting point. We're going to take a look. I sat down with Joe Lynch, and we're going to put our heads together and try to come up with a plan. Usually, it's your older vehicles that eat up your maintenance costs and most of your fuel, so if we can figure out a maintenance plan with this $10,000 to get that going.
Right.
Yeah. That's just one step. We're also going to apply on March 1st for the $200,000 IT grant. The Community Compact also allows cities and towns, we didn't take advantage of it last year, so this is a very good opportunity if we can get in. So I sat down with Jim Segroy and Rob Mallett, and we're going to meet with the department heads on Monday, our first meeting.
Because that's a competitive grant, right?
Yes, yeah. So we're going to try to come up with, what's the best way to take that, if in fact we do get that grant or a portion thereof? Just want to let everybody know that the new Town of Milton website, the redesign and relaunch, will take place next Tuesday, January 10th. It's more dynamic, it's a lot more user-friendly. Emily Martin and a large group of Town Hall administrators are down there today, learning about the ins and outs of it, and the subscription possibilities, where you can email stuff out, and people can subscribe and unsubscribe to certain alerts, or whatever picks their fancy, so... Kudos to Rob and Jim, and they held meetings all day, basically some one-on-one stuff with Madam Clerk regarding what role that Records Access Officer will have going forward. Obviously, deep into the budget preparation, had a very good meeting with School Committee Chair Walker and Assistant Superintendent Glenn Pavlicek today to, you know, just basically show them what the expenditures look like for a town, on the town side and school side, for a non-contingent and contingent budget. And obviously, it's preliminary. We're still waiting for some revenue numbers to come in. Hopefully, we start getting those in in the next couple of weeks, and we can really start to dig deep. But basically, combing through all the expenditures and making some revenue guesses at this point in time as to, you know, conservatively where we think we can be for the budget, so I should be ready to present next Tuesday to everyone on both sides. And then, the last thing is, is just the pay-as-you-throw trash sticker program. I'm going to try to dedicate some time to take a look at that, see if there's some inconvenience or inefficiencies in that program, and see if we can maybe dive deep and find out if there's a better way of doing things, take a look at some surrounding towns. Obviously, it works, but just, on a night like tonight, I'm not sure how many people are going to go out and run out to the store and grab three stickers. So just take a look at some of the inconveniences and inefficiencies, and see if there's, you know, something. There might not be anything, but I think there's some room for improvement there, if we could.
Sounds like a lot of good initiatives.
Great.
Yeah.
Thanks for the update.
Yep. Full on.
A lot going on.
Yeah.
Chair's report. Not really a report, but just wanted to mention, I think as most people know, we have the changing of the guard at the State House tomorrow. We're going to have a new senator and a new representative, so congratulations to our new Senator Walter Timmeltie and our new Representative Bill Driscoll, who we're going to be looking forward to working with. Walter Timmeltie's represented us for 18 years in the House of Representatives since 1999, and he's been immersed in a lot of projects with us, Yule and Rink, the airplane noise, some of the budget issues, just to name a few of them. And he's going to be replacing Senator Brian Joyce, who is stepping down after 20 years of service to Milton, first as a state rep, and most recently, for many of those years, as our state senator. So just wanted to thank Senator Joyce for all of his efforts for the town, all of those 20 years, and whether it was from the Blue Hills or East Milton Square, he had a lot of accomplishments and was able to raise a lot of funds and bring a lot of money into the town, and did something we'll always be grateful for. The biggest project that I think...
School.
It was the school building project that Senator Joyce really played a clerical role in, and that was early in his term, so it was many years ago, and the project has been over for about 10 years, for the most part. Well, maybe close to that, but that was a very big project. We got 90% state reimbursement, which, you know, was really unheard of, and that was a pretty significant benefit for Milton. So thank you to Senator Joyce, and we wish him well and his family as he leaves the State House, and we look forward to working with Walter Timmeltie and Bill Driscoll as our new elected officials at the state level.
Absolutely.
So just wanted to acknowledge them and to thank them. I don't have anything else to report. Does anyone have a report tonight?
Yeah, just want to congratulate the girls cross-country team. They had their breakout dinner tonight at 6:00 over at Cunningham, and they do a potluck dinner every year. So three girls, I think, are all scholastic. They've won the state championship again. A dynamic team. I mean, this is, the team that's going to go down in history as one of the best athletic teams ever to come out of Milton High School, without doubt. So they deserve a ton of praise. Congratulations, they're still young. They're going to win again next year, too. So we'll be right back here saying the same thing, I hope.
Amazing.
Which is really exciting, so... That, and just want to remind folks that, you know, we are very active now on social media with Facebook and Twitter, and to follow us either on Facebook at our Town Page and also on Twitter at @TownOfMiltonMass. I think you can get some good up-to-date information. You can see our DPW crew on, filling potholes on certain days, and, you know, a lot of good info, so it's something people should check out.
Any other reports? And Citizen Speak response?
We only had one, and, I mean, the East Milton, I think, as a body, we all agree that we would like to see the East Milton deck project move forward as expeditions as possible. Right now, it's in the hands of the state and the federal government. Until we get a word out of the feds in terms of the 4F issue, I don't think there's an awful lot we can, I mean, our hands are kind of tied.
Do you want to just explain 4F for anyone who's viewing, just in case they have it?
Yeah, it's, basically, it's similar to a state law, which basically says that you can't use parkland for anything other than parkland without either replacing it. The state has one where it requires 2/3 votes of the state legislature to take parkland and convert it to a non-park or non-open space use. The federal law is very similar. And since it is federally funded and it is land, it's really air rides over an interstate highway. The Southeast Expressway is Route 93, so the feds are involved, there's no question. So until they, until they opine on it, we...
Yeah, and we, through the person of the planning director, have been pushing the state to try to move this along as quickly as possible, which is Mr. Travers's concern, that we try to move this as much as we can this year.
Yeah, and it's a valid concern. I mean, you know, we, you know, the longer it lingers, you do risk losing funding.
Right, we have been advocating religiously, though, in asking for a response, so... But it was good to have Paul come in here, and we know that the merchants, you know, should have a say in what's happening down there, and we do want to support the businesses, but we don't have any control over the timing right now.
Right. Yeah, and if, I mean, if we had all the money in the world, I'd certainly advocate for, you know, looking for other, you know, parking options that we could pay for ourselves, but, I mean, we don't have that luxury right now.
Right.
If I could add one thing, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have been in contact with Highway Administrator Tom Tlin regarding this, and it is on their agenda with, they meet with the FHWA monthly, and that's on their agenda for Thursday, just to revisit where the Mass Highway is revisiting where FHWA stands on this. So it is on their agenda for Thursday as a topic of discussion, so...
I mean, they put a pretty impressive document into federal highway, you know, several pages well-written.
The Howard Stein Hudson Report, yes. Yeah, and Howard Stein Hudson was acting for the state on that.
Yes.
But we did submit a letter in support of it many months ago. Okay, so as we get more updates on that project, we'll make them known, but future agenda items, Tom, the annual report, I know you're going to be drafting that for us.
Yes, yeah, I got to do that soon.
Do we, do you think maybe one of the February meetings, we could get that on an agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else for future agenda items? I know we, you know, we, budget, that's on for the 10th, we have the medical marijuana coming back up on the 31st.
We're going to have a Yule and Rink update soon, you know, we've, quickly, I can just mention that we've had, you know, solid meetings with Curry, the DCR, Milton Youth Hockey. We followed that up with a meeting just last week with Milton Youth Hockey. We're going to be meeting with Curry in the next week or so, looking at a potential permit, 10-year permit between the state, Curry, and Milton, Town of Milton, Town of Milton being the permit holder, in a unique public-private partnership, which could be a model for the future for how they operate Rink. So, you know, we're looking forward to that. We're having very good transparent discussions between all parties, and I think that, you know, once we get a little bit more, we're a little bit closer to that, we'll be able to, both Michael and I will be able to give a good update to the rest of the folks, yeah.
Okay, great.
The vehicle use policy? I know Paige had done some back and forth with Tom.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I've read through it, I've got a bunch of comments, I just want to get back to you on...
Yeah, hopefully, that might be something that we could take a vote on, either on the 10th or the 31st.
Yep.
I gave Paige some comments, well, an initial comment, I told her I was going to send her some more.
It's a little disjointed right now.
Yeah, it's, I think it needs to be organized a little bit differently, because it carves out certain positions, but it, it's not, it doesn't really make sense when you read the rest of the organization, so there's some inconsistencies that we need to... I think that one's going to take a little while to get that into final form, but I'm glad you mentioned it, Mike, to have it, that is something we probably should have on an agenda pretty soon, depending on how quickly the next draft is available.
And the other thing I was thinking on that one, too, is you might want to maybe approach the School Town...
Consolidation.
Consolidation Committee. That may be a good policy to, I mean, there's no reason that couldn't be a joint policy, rather than just a town-side policy.
Maybe. I thought that committee was kind of in a recess for a while.
I don't know.
Okay.